Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter.
Dear God, we ask for your presence today. We acknowledge that we cannot do anything without you, Lord. We depend on your grace and mercy to lead us and guide us in your righteousness. Help us, Lord, to be, to not be discouraged, but instead be encouraged when things are tough. We know that your ways are perfect, and we should work diligently to be more like you. Bless us with more faith and hope that we may accomplish what you want us to do and be. Let us always remember who we are and whose we are. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Protim, Ricky Gonsal. Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlin Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment? We have any public comment cards? Don't see any. Tell this time to remind you to put your phone on vibrate, and we'll move on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of July 5th, which will publish July 22nd, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on July 5th minutes? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3A.
Resolution 22-155, appointing Trelaina Laney-Kerligan as city clerk.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Marlin Lewis. Laney, come on up.
For those of you who don't know, Erin Romero's been our clerk for the last two years, is leaving, and this is my pick after research and who I feel could really do a good job. She comes from us, to us, from the parish. She has experience as a clerk, and she's here tonight. So is there any comments or questions?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm excited.
Yeah, she's been working for two weeks that she's come in, and there's been a really good transition, and Erin has, you know, made sure of that and spent the time. So she got to put herself first on the agenda tonight. I know you're just making her wait. But if there's no questions or comments, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. All right, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right.
Excellent.
And having worked with her the last two weeks, a great addition. She's gonna fit right in. I think it's gonna be fun.
Excellent.
Item 3B.
Resolution 22-156, appointing Wayne Decoti to the Squirrel Run Levy and Drainage District Board of Commissioners for a three-year term.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion?
Is he here tonight?
I contacted everyone, or someone did. Some could make it, some couldn't. They were, you know. And basically, we're putting back just about the entire board again. They started this work, many of them, many years ago, and then they worked really hard inside of their subdivision Levy District to get a tax pass. So now they actually have some money to spend. So we felt that it was really a good thing if we kept them together. You'll notice that this time, the terms are staggered, because that's the way, and the state wrote this. This, we're going by the state statute and how we're handling this. But we staggered their terms, but that way, at least everyone who started this kind of gets to work together, and, and not finish, but build what they, you know, what they worked so hard to build. So, but some of them are here tonight, and some of them aren't.
I just wanted to meet them, because I haven't met them.
I understand. Any discussion on this item? Then please vote your machines. Thank you.
Resolution 22-157, appointing Richard Romero to the Squirrel Run Levy and Drainage District Board of Commissioners for a three-year term.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. I don't know who had the second. It was like a...
Maybe Mr. Broussard.
Okay. Councilman David Broussard. We all know this guy. And he, he had a prior commitment. But is there any discussion?
You said we all know him. That's the guy at the Pepperplex?
Yes, yes. And see, to be a member of this district, you have to live inside of Squirrel Run, inside the Levy District. And he lives in the Levy District.
Because Richard Romero's a common name in the KDM.
There's a whole bunch of them.
We all know him. I was like, me?
Take care of each other, one.
Right.
Cool. Any further discussion? And please vote your machines. Thank you. 3D.
Resolution number 22-158, appointing Burton Sescha Jr. to the Squirrel Run Levy and Drainage District Board of Commissioners for a four-year term.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Councilman Dustin Swier, and the second, I think, was Councilman David Broussard. And we have him here. Good evening, sir.
Thank you all for considering me. If you have any questions about what we do or how we do it, I'll entertain any questions to the best I can right now. But we do have a very workable board that diligently is attempting to have our levy ultimately certified so that we can get out of our, bring our flood rates down to nothing. But it's, it's gonna take time. It's gonna take some effort.
So if you don't mind, since I'm the newbie in the group, well, being Brooke...
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Can you explain a little bit about what the board does, what the responsibility of the board is today?
Presently, the responsibility of the board is to make sure that we have our levy in working condition. But in addition to that, the reason that I had gone to the legislature to be able to put this levy board together was that in order to get a FEMA-certified levy, you have to be under the auspices of a public body. And of course, the public body would be the city of New Iberia.
Okay.
And the purpose of it is to be able to have what's called a certified levy. And to do that, there are guidelines put out by the federal government that have to be met. And it's not just a small litany of things that have to be done. It includes maintenance programs. It includes how you're gonna get the water out if something happens. It includes a levy that meets the FEMA qualifications, which have to do with the materials that the levy's made out of, the width of the levy, the height of the levy, compaction of the levy. It's, it takes, it's tremendous undertaking. And of course, we did have a good levy because it held during the 16 flood. But getting it certified is another issue. In order to be able to help fund that, I've gone to the state legislature as well and gotten it as part of the capital outlay program. But there are also some incredible guidelines that you have to follow to be able to qualify for those funds.
Okay.
So we're doing all of those things. And of course, we accepted a levy where we
have pumping systems, and we have to update those, maintain those, and make sure everything is in good working order. And we not only have a good board, but we have some interesting individuals who are part of our subdivision, who volunteer. And this is all without pay to be able to make sure that all systems are working continuously.
Awesome. Okay.
So it's, it's not a small endeavor. But if you don't drain big, shame on you.
Yeah.
But the purpose is, is that along the Gulf Coast, whether we realize this or not, and I'm talking about the entire Gulf Coast, from Brownsville, Texas, all the way down to Florida, all these subdivisions that have been built in levis that are now considered possible flood zones are gonna have to have levy systems, and they'll all have to qualify. And what happens is, is that when you have a certification letter from, that says you have a good levy, you bring that to the insurance people who say, okay, now we'll take you out of a flood zone, because you have a system that meets the criteria for being elevated out of that flood zone.
Okay. That makes sense. Yeah.
And that's, that's, and this is, we're kind of the first, from our perspective, to be doing this. But it's gonna occur. You're gonna hear more and more about that.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Is that reasonable?
Yes, sir.
Y'all considered a political subdivision, right?
That's right.
Okay. Y'all can apply, y'all can apply for your own capital outlay.
I did. Yeah, that's what we did.
Taxing, taxing authority by we... And we were, and let me say this. One of the reasons why we made, we have to raise money is for a taxing authority. And we diligently worked, and we have a lot of good people in the subdivision who recognized what was the need for us. And we voted a tax in. And this next year, we're gonna have money collected for our levy board as a result of the positive vote from our people within that levy district, which is a big plus, you know, because it's the only way it works.
That's excellent.
Thank you, Mr. S...
Mr. Bert, I just wanted to thank you for volunteering, stepping up again for a second term, and then everyone else who went ahead and volunteered. I think we just have one new member this go around. So, but, you know, she has the experience living in the house. She's married to Dr. Clark, who was on it. But we appreciate y'all so much for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you all for appointments. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thanks again. All right, 3F.
Resolution number 22-159, appointing Renee Simon to the Squirrel Run Levy and Drainage District Board of Commissioners for a four-year term.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, and who made the second?
Right here.
Okay. Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Any discussion on this item?
She's not here.
No, Renee's not here.
Simo. It's his last name.
Yeah, I know.
He's Simon. He's Simo. Different, down to buy, you know?
The chair person.
Yeah, yeah. So if there, is there no discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
This isn't the new person, though?
No, no. Our next one is the new person. I was speeding ahead to 3F. Now we're on 3F.
Resolution 22-160, appointing Elizabeth Clark to the Squirrel Run Levy and Drainage District Board of Commissioners for a four-year term.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot.
Second.
Second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this one?
Two-year term.
So is it two-year term?
Yes, if you look, yes, if you look at the, you see how they're staggered?
Yeah.
So that you won't lose that institutional knowledge. Different people will go off a different, kind of like us.
Yeah.
Kind of like us.
Okay.
Any other discussion? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, 3G.
Resolution 22-161, reappointing Doug Louvier to serve on the New Iberia Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term, as recommended by the University of Louisiana at Lafayette.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Doug's here tonight. Thank you for coming, Doug.
Thank you.
Is there any comments or discussion?
Is he being appointed, or is he reappointed?
Reappointed. Doug has already served.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, maybe you could tell us a little bit about that board. Just educating me.
Doug.
Well, we look over, like, new employments, test scores and all that. We vote pass the test scores and all that of the police department and the fire department and all that, and stuff like that. That's about it.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, Doug. Thanks for serving.
Resolution 22-162, reappointing Wyatt Collins to serve on the New Iberia Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term, as recommended by the University of Louisiana at Lafayette.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard.
Second.
Second by, it was a tie, Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Mr. Wyatt couldn't make it tonight. He, I talked to him on the phone, and he's excited to serve again. Is there any discussion? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, 3I.
Resolution number 22-163, accepting a certificate of substantial completion for the Louisiana Pepperplex Soccer Field Refurbishments Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any discussion on this item?
So this, are these T-ball fields?
No, ma'am. This is the soccer field that we replanted. So it's just grass.
Okay.
We did it at the time of year, which really, I'm glad we did, because it's gotten so hot. But we did it at the time of year when the grass would actually take and grow.
Okay.
And we pretty much just made that timeline. But that's all it really is. That's why I don't have any pictures, because it's just grass. It was grass before, and it's grass again. But it was a vital part to keep them that it would grow in this season so that they'd be ready to play.
Okay.
So grass was just planted. I went and looked this morning. I was like, what am I looking at?
Yeah, yeah. They aerated, they add sand, they plant grass. I mean, it's a process.
And once it's cut, maybe it'll look different. It'll be pretty, I guess.
Green. Yeah, yeah, it's coming. I mean, and we are in the hottest, I mean, the sprinklers are running.
I don't know much about soccer, so I'm not really sure what to expect.
No, the sprinklers are running. We had some issues with some of the irrigation, because, you know, we just taken over it. The system's old.
Yeah.
Richard has done a really good job of limping it along and checking on the fields and watering, because it is so hot right now. But, you know, this was the time to do it.
It is green, though.
Yeah, it's green.
So it looks healthy.
Yeah.
Grass.
Yeah, it's grass.
Grass, yeah. Okay, I'm done.
Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, Paul.
Resolution number 22-164, authorizing the mayor to proceed with energy infrastructure updates at New Iberia City Hall as part of the statewide energy efficiency program, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any discussion on this item?
So can you talk about what energy infrastructure upgrades are?
Basically, we're gonna get for free, totally for free. Erin has worked hard on that and helped with it. And it's been an adventure, because it's gone on even long before Erin was here with our last clerk. It's free. So anything that's free, you pay for it as I'm going away. This was complicated. But finally, we have this company coming in, and they're basically changing every light in this building. And as you can see, many are mismatched. Many are, you know, I can't wait. They'll all be LED. We'll save money on our electric bill. They'll be more efficient. They'll be better lighting. And so it's a federal program that the money ends up coming down, trickling down through a bunch of agencies and everything else, and finally gets to us. So it's something that's a long time coming. We had tried to do it one time before, and it just didn't work out. It, we had some issues. But...
So you're basically getting weatherized, like some of these homes?
Yeah, think of it like that. Think of it like that. It's, it's that kind of a project. So really looking forward to it. I, I think that we have some challenges with our lighting in a whole lot of areas in this building. And it would be very costly to, you know, change all these 1960 fixtures. So it's something we knew we wanted to do, and finally, it's gonna happen.
Excellent. Okay.
And we did try for other buildings and other stuff, and we'll continue. But this was the only one that was selected.
Okay.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Great, thank you. All right, item 4A.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2022-15, an ordinance granting a franchise to Louisiana Water Company, a Louisiana corporation, its successors, and assigns for a 10-year, for a period of 10 years, and a provision for an automatic renewal of an additional 10 years for the construction, maintenance, operation of water utilities and/or water transmission and distribution systems in, through, and across the city of New Iberia, Louisiana, and for the use of the streets, alleys, and the public places within the limits of said municipality, as same may not, as same may be now or hereafter lawfully exist, and repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and to set for public hearing on August 2nd, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Discussion on this item?
Okay, so this is...
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Brooke. You go first.
I just wanted to know if anything was changing since the last time?
Not a lot. We negotiated for, and we have Mr. Fowler here, and their attorney, Edward Landry, here. We went through probably two or three rounds of negotiations. Remember, we put it off because it said, well, let's, let's just look into it further. We get some mapping, and we get, that we didn't have before, that will help us. We, I have a clear understanding of, you know, what we're doing versus what we did last time. And it's a little different, but then in other ways, it's not. I mean, they, they seem to have found ways to work through and give us everything we need for the fire protection, for the fire rating. They're still putting money up to make those things happen. We talked about basically street repairs was a big one, because after we spend this 12.5, and as you know, in November, we have a, no new cost to the voters that we hope to pass that would give us even millions more to spend on roads. One of the big things we talked about was, you know, better care at, when they do have to cut and patch. So it was some good meetings, and they were informative, but it's not that much different than it was.
Okay. So...
Not, not for the lack of tron, but it just, you know, there was nothing else that, you know. And look, they're back there laughing at me. But there was nothing else that, you know, we can call them up. You can hear that side of it. But it was some good discussions. Yes, ma'am.
So, and this is more trying to educate myself on this. So where are the rates and all that set by, for Laco, like for water? I mean, how's all that set? And I know that they do sewer, so are they just doing a throughput for sewer?
All they do is bill for us for the sewer. They do get a fee to do that. And they're basically billing off of all those flow meters and everything we have everywhere. And, and the sewer user fee, you know, that's, they, they handle the billing part of it. And they get a fee.
But we actually handle, we handle the pipes and...
Oh, yeah. They don't do anything for the sewer. All they do is a pass-through, because they already were sending out water bills. So years ago, they attached the sewer bill to the water bill, and they get a fee for handling that, because we had some big discussions about that, you know. But that's what they do for us. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Fowler. I'm the general manager with Laco. And I'm, you know, regarding our rates, our consumer rates are basically driven and regulated by Louisiana Public Service Commission. And we go through that process, like every other utility does that deals with that. So that is the governing agent that governs our rates. So, you know, any other questions about rates? We have rate for inside the city. It's, it's a, it's a, pretty much it's a singular rate. Everybody pays the same rate for the water. We don't have it broken down between, you know, commercial or residential or anything like that. It's just a single rate. And as the mayor said, we also do the billing for the sewer, for the sewer user fee, because it is a consumption-based sewer rate. So based on what, how much water the consumer uses, the city gives them an allowance, and then whatever they, they're above that allowance, and they get billed for the sewer, we collect the money, and we remit that back to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So the only question I have is, in the, in the foreseeing future, do you see any rate increases coming?
That was my next question.
And I'm sure that's what the general public wants to know. It's not, I mean...
Well, the thing is, in today's environment, right now with inflation, we do have a pending rate case before the Public Service Commission. As y'all know, inflation is just running rampant right now. And our, our cost of operations over the last probably 18 to 24 months, our chemical costs have doubled. Our electrical costs have, have gone up significantly. Our margins are closing very rapidly. So we do have a rate case pending before the Public Service Commission right now. The commission looks at all the data that we present to them. Normally, it takes about a year or so for them to go through that before they actually come to a final decision on, on, on what they're gonna do. We recently, because of the situation with the inflationary pressures and, and some of the costs that are spiraling out of control, they did grant us a four and a half percent interim rate increase that went into effect in May, until they actually rule on the, on the final rate case, because the, the, the margins are down significantly over the last 24 months. And we don't, we don't anticipate our cost of business slowing down, or those costs to stop from escalating. They're, they're continuing to go up right now.
No, no, I understand that. The reason why I asked the question, because we get the phone calls, because they, people think we work for Laco. We work for KICO. We don't. So y'all have the answers. We don't.
Typically, in, in, with rates like that, you normally, when you don't have these inflationary pressures, you normally have a rate increase, and you might go five or six years before you have another rate increase and things like that. But right now, it's just, it's just, the costs are rising so fast.
So, and that's understandable. So this interim rate increase that you're talking about, it's like an automatic increase that goes in effect even without the...
I saw it.
Yeah.
No, the Public Service Commission approved that.
The Public Service Commission approves the interim rate increase also? Okay.
They did.
All right. No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, Miss Broussard.
Yeah, I'm gonna let, I'll come back to you. Who's next? Councilman David Broussard.
You're invested in New Iberia. We appreciate that. Top-notch. Built that big tank, Mr. Mayor, you remember? On Ferguson Street, decorating all kinds of trees and shrubbery.
Yeah, when we were first in office.
You're invested in that, sir. We appreciate it. A lot of towns want to tie in to you. Louisville, the general...
A lot of water systems is a challenging business, yes.
But we appreciate what you've done.
Well, thank you.
But we want to try to keep it down as much as we can for the citizens. But we appreciate everything. We don't want to handle water. So it's individually with y'all.
You know, the, the regulatory environment drives our, our necessity to spend money and make improvements. If you drive by the plant now, you see a lot going on. We have about four and a half, five million dollar worth of improvements that are going on right now. And a lot of it is regulatory-driven. The, the window of operation for water utilities just keeps getting tighter and tighter and tighter. And we have to do what's necessary to make sure we have a safe, quality product out for the customers.
Yes, ma'am.
So I actually noticed, all of a sudden, my bill went up, because I used to pay a certain amount every month. And I live alone, so I saw a rate increase. Wasn't quite sure what was going on. But do you guys have any programs, like for the elderly and very low-income residents who may not be able to afford these rate increases? Because inflation's killing all of us.
No, no, the only thing, you know, from, we don't have any, any programs ourselves, but there are energy-efficient, you know, fixtures and plumbing devices that, that people can install. But then when you look at a lot of fixed income folks, to go spend several thousand dollars to renovate and remodel their home, to save two or three dollars a month on, on their water bill, it's, it's kind of challenging when they're, when they're struggling, you know, to, to pay utilities and stuff. But, you know, there, there aren't any particular programs from Laco because of the, the cost, you know, to go in and have to remodel and, and have plumbing fixtures that are more water conservation-type, type fixtures. So the only thing that people can manage their, their, their water and sewer bill is through their consumption, try and, try and manage their consumption as, as best they can.
Do we know about how much, well, you probably do know this number. What's the rate in, that you guys are, the increase that you're asking for? That's pending.
Well, it's pending, right now, was probably somewhere between eight and a half to nine percent. So that's why they granted an interim of about four and a half percent. But really, at the end of the day, it's, it's gonna be whatever the Public Service Commission determines at that time. An average residential water bill is about $38. And so when I looked at it in May and June, it looks like that, that, that average went up about four percent. So it kind of, kind of, kind of follows our, our recent rate case that we had.
And if they don't approve the rate increase, would you roll back the four and a half percent?
Oh, we would have to do whatever the, was the Public Service Commission directs us to do.
Okay. Eight and a half percent, that's a lot for some of the residents in this city. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Ledbetter, you had your hand up?
She asked my question.
Oh, she stole your question?
Yes, sorry.
I hate it when that happens.
That was okay.
Okay. Anybody else? No? I have one thing on Laco that I had not realized, and we just had a meeting on it. The Hopkins Street Road Swap, you know how they're coming in? We had to take the light poles down. They're tearing up, putting these giant drainage boxes in, and then resurfacing the street, and it's a giant project. Laco has to move the majority of their lawns. They have main lawns running through there. They have trunk lawns running through there. I thought they got paid to do that. I did not realize that when it's in a road right... I did not realize that when it's in a road right away or when it's somewhere, you know, when the road swap was going on many years ago, we, as a council, inherited that. I had no clue, I just thought the money was there with the state. That DOTD was doing the road, they were handling that too. Well, Laco has to go, and I mean, some of these lines are 16 feet deep. I met with their engineers, we kind of looked at the whole program, looked at how they would do it, started looking at cost. I mean, they are times that they really, you know, every pipe that's here that furnishes water for somebody, they paid for. And I thought there were ways that they got money back from the government or that when they did a project like this, you know, maybe it was even profitable. Well, unbeknownst to me, they have to come out of pocket for all of that, and that is a huge project. I had not realized how much in the road swap that it would impact between the lighting on Hopkins Street, the sidewalks, it's a major project, but, you know, kudos to them, they brought their engineer over, guy did a really good job of kind of explaining it. We had some decisions to make that, kind of where the pipes will go, the depths they'll go, those kind of things. They brought cross-sections, we worked through all of that, I felt like I was at my other job. But, you know, they are investing money in our infrastructure, and it kind of came, I don't think they planned that because I wondered that, but it kind of came at a timely, you know, we're there, I'm there talking to them, trying to get something out of them because that's my job, and I have to get, you know, what I can for my city every day that I'm here. And then when I really realized how they were spending money and things were happening, I felt a little set up, but I'm sure it was not, you know, I'm picking on them, but it was good to hear and see that, you know, just how much it costs to run that and just how much of infrastructure that maybe you don't think about. You know, you don't see it. But to realize how much money they're investing just in that one thing, I understand why you need a franchise agreement, I understand why it has to be a long-term agreement. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
So I have a question for you. It says that the franchise fee is like four percent. So how much did we get last year? I'm just trying to, is it every year or is it just per contract?
It's the same. You could raise the franchise fee by one percent, and basically it would be us doing that. It would be us charging more for our citizen because it's our franchise fee. So it didn't make any sense, we left it right where it was. It didn't make sense to raise it because, you know, we all feel the crunch and we're just talking about inflationary cost and all of that. Well, I didn't want to be inflationary, so it wasn't the time to do that.
No, I'm just...
It's the same as last year, but there was one percent, I think we could have done something, but again, we would have been, you know, just adding to the issue.
Yeah, I mean, if it was going to be a pass-through cost to our residents, we wouldn't want to do that.
Correct.
But what was the, what amount, you know, what does that equal to?
I knew you were going to ask me that, and I do not remember that number. Maybe, maybe Mr. Fala has it.
And that's paid yearly or paid per contract?
Paid quarterly, I believe.
I think quarterly, yeah, because I was going to say it's all through the years.
Okay, cool, okay.
Yes.
Okay, excellent, okay.
Kevin, do you know how much it is?
Currently?
Yeah.
No, but I can find out.
Okay. I was like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, he's going to save me, he's got the answer, oh, no.
Thought he did when he said currently.
I know, I know. See what I put up with every day?
See, it's, now that, of course, that increases over the years, I'd like to have rate increases.
Yes, sir.
In 2020, I don't have all of 21, but in 2020, it was close to $200,000, $188,000.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It's not a huge amount, it's not, you know. Thank you for that information. Kevin, no dead now. Is there, anybody have any other questions?
It's going to be a little higher with that four and a half percent.
Yeah. Okay, well then, I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. All right, 4B.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2022-16, an ordinance approving the water service agreement with Louisiana Water Company and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith and to set for public hearing on August 2nd, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah, so this is all the city services, correct?
This is basically, yes, this is the agreement.
Okay. So on the fire hydrants, the reason why I was asking about the franchise agreement because I was trying to see, does that offset the fire hydrant money that we spent $50 for a fire hydrant that's bigger than four and a half? That comes out to like $367,000 a year. So that's why I was just asking.
Right, no, and it doesn't. Fire hydrants are expensive, they do upgrade a few fire hydrants a year for us, and they work on them for the rating, you know, to make sure that we have our rating, and that was something we did go back and forth on. I tried to get some, you know, additional fire hydrants, but I mean, it just didn't work out.
Okay. So with the $50, I mean, what do we, is that maintenance of them? I mean, what do they do for the $50?
Come on up.
On the hydrant fee, that's actually a lower fee than when you see, let's say, the private or the non-governmental entities pay for fire protection. So it does cover the avalanche tax, it does cover the maintenance and upkeep on the hydrants. Every year we go out there and we flush the hydrants annually, we do inspections on them, we have to make sure that they're all working properly. We repaint the hydrants about every three or four years, that's all factored in long-term, and then we still have the fire rating components that are all, that we deal with as well.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to understand what they do for the $50.
I had to ask the same question, so that's fine. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Adam 4C.
Introduction of Special Ordinance 2021-2022-09, amending the budget to reflect fund allocation to Pepperplex for facility improvements and to set for public hearing on August 2nd, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and a second, who was the second, was it, oh, okay. Councilwoman Dustin Swier, thank you. Discussion on this item, I would like to explain it if I can.
Please.
Okay, we took our bids on the Pepperplex, and we had $3 million budgeted. Our bids came in, and these will be round figures, our bids came in at almost 3.6 million, so $600,000. 300, I wrote that number down, let's see, just give me a minute. 324,000 of the overage is because we added the turf at the T-ball fields. And with Richard coming in, that's why you hire somebody with experience, with Richard coming in, he's like, the 12, 13, 14-year-old kids are not going to come back from playing at a ballpark in Broussard or Youngsville, even though we're rebuilding our park and have just taken over it, they're not going to come back. So if you're going to build a new crop and succeed long-term with this program, you got to start with the little kids. So I hadn't really factored that in, I was fixing everything else and not the T-ball fields because I was interested in at least obtaining some travel ball because that's going to help pay for this adventure. That's going to bring people to our hotels, to our restaurants, buying gas, you know, staying here. So I was focused on that money aspect of it. Richard coming in and running exactly a facility like this, but much larger and nicer, he was kind of like, look, you know, you got to start with the kids. So, you know, now we're kind of laughing, saying we just might have the T-ball tournament championship place, you know, because, well, actually, all the other fields that we're turfing are exactly the same size on the infield as a T-ball field. So we can end up with nine T-ball fields if we really wanted to host a, I don't know if anybody does that, but we could be the king of the T-ball tournaments, okay? I'm looking for that, all right? The other thing, as we talk about, if we're going to get our kids involved and maybe introduce new kids to baseball, introduce new kids to the Pepperplex, you want to start when they're little. So 324,000 of our overage is because we elected to add to the project. So if you look at it on that basis, our bids are like 10% over, it's not, it's not as bad. We got competitive pricing and that's where we land, so what I've asked you to look at next meeting, because the 45 days, contractor only holds his bid for 45 days. So at the next meeting, I'll be ready to bring the bid information and the contractor, but at this meeting, I said, well, why don't I get the money lined up so that when we vote next time, we know we have the money, we're ready to go, and then we award the contract. It's just the right way to do it. So the other money, I'm asking that it would come out of the general fund. I mean, we bit this project off and now we got to chew it. We are working on some other ideas and concepts because we all know we have to go further. We got to get this done and you, you know, you attack and do and accomplish what you take on, but I know this is just phase one of more phases if we're really going to make this, you know, the park that we think we should make it, but one step at a time, okay? So for this, tonight, it's to clearly understand that 324,000 comes from, and let me tell you where some of the money's coming from. We enacted the Economic Development District earlier this year. Well, Richard's been cutting the grass by himself, he's been out there fixing the irrigation, he's been out there doing everything, so we haven't hired anybody yet, and it was kind of by design. So we've racked up some funds that we haven't spent. We bought a used truck, we are kind of looking at, we have to buy a tractor, we are hoping to buy a lot of the lawn mowers and equipment from the boards and commissions that were already out there that gave this up and, you know, we're taking over, so we hoping to buy some used stuff from them and save some money. But in the interim, the EDD is collecting money that is exactly for this. So Kevin could tell me that, you know, we could take a couple hundred thousand dollars of that to go toward this overage, if you will, or these additions. So some of it will come out of that, the rest of it, I'm asking that it come out of the general fund.
So when we get ready to start paying on the bond, we're going to have enough funds to make our payment?
First question I asked was, I want to steal ahead what I need later, okay? So yes, our bond payments are covered, we're fine, and we are still collecting money, and we didn't take all of it. I didn't get so crazy that, you know, we understand O&M can kill a project, we all know that, and we are in our infancy because we just took it over. It's not a new facility, but it's brand-new for us. So we have to be conscious of the O&M. Just like I talk about a future phase, I'm going to figure out how to pay for it the same way we figured out how to pay for this before I bring it to you. I'm not going to just say, hey, look, we're still not competing with Youngsville and Broussard, let's go on a tangent and do X, Y, Z. We're not going to do that till we know how we're going to pay for it. But we're working on some ideas.
Okay, just want to make sure we can pay that bond.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Due to the perplexity of the Pepperplex, I don't want this to be too complex.
Ah, I like that.
So are we borrowing money to fix a foreseen maybe issue or just something that, because I know we got a superstar in Richard in terms of building baseball fields, and it's basically on his request that we are doing this, right?
His request, our request is to do the Pepperplex, and then we found him and landed and got very lucky that we were able to hook him. His request is the $324,000 for the T-ball fields. He feels we should do that. So if you want to look at it one way, 200,000 of the T-ball, this would be the painless way to look at it, 200,000 that we have saved and the EDD that we haven't spent yet, I'm using that toward the T-ball fields, so I'm not borrowing anything, I still have to come out the general fund with some, but what we've saved by scrimping and just getting going and holding back employees and Richard, you know, working and kind of doing two and three jobs out there for right now is going toward that. But yes, we are going a little fur, we're spending more money to do the T-ball fields, but I think he's, I'm totally convinced he's right that that's the future of that park. But if we don't do them now, costs will only go up, and we have a good bid from a good contractor to do that, so to me, now's the time to do it. The other part of the thing is timing of the whole thing. Like we planted the seeds now for the soccer so that they could play again. We're trying to get this project going so that by the fall, people are not, some will be sometime, but they're not totally disrupted that, you know, if you shut it down completely and said, no season at all this year, see y'all when we finish, well, we would lose more kids. So it's kind of a timing issue too that we're trying to say, we're getting this work going so that, you know, we can retain the kids we have, and then once people realize what we are creating, we'll start attracting new kids. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. And I'm like Whitney Houston, I believe the children are the future. Teach them well and watch them grow.
That's it, that's it, man. This means getting cool about a minute.
I'll wait for the breakout in song.
Okay. Councilman Broussard.
We're putting all this good turf in every field. How is the outside field, is it going to be slushy or we have enough?
Uh, well...
Build up a little bit, it's going to be sad if we have a good up front and they're slushing all over in the back.
I agree with that, and I think we'll try to keep the slushing to a minimum, but there is dirt work, there is drainage in the project. No, we can't afford to turf all the fields, but there really aren't almost any facilities that all the field is tamed, because you just can't afford it. So we do know, and there is one field in particular that you go there now and you could run crawfish out of there. I mean, it's bad, but we are making improvements and we'll look at that. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I have a couple, I mean, we talked about inflation, we just talked about it earlier. I mean, of course, we knew...
We're living through it.
We're living through it right now, and I can understand that was going on with, you know, with the increases. You did mention, my thing is, I don't like to, we started this whole deal with the Pepperplex to get it going, and my thing is, I don't like to half, you know what, not sit the other end.
Thank you.
So we planted this, we planted this seed to get this to grow, right? And if we don't fertilize it and we just half, you know what it, then we're not going to get the outcome that we were hoping for.
Right.
So my thing is, I'm all in, I mean, at this point, there's no turning back, and we need to make it happen, and I think if Richard, who runs this facility, says and requests, hey, this is how it needs to be done, that's what we ratified him for, that's what we hired him for. So that's why I stand on that, so, thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate Mr. Richard even thinking of that because it never crossed my mind that we need to keep the kids there, you know, from little, from T-ball, so I wasn't concerned about the T-ball fields at all, but it makes sense what he said. You want to keep them there, that way they continue to grow and stay with the Pepperplex. But I think it's a good idea, I feel the same way as Dustin, you know, we got to stick with it, we cannot just halfway do this, and I think it's going to be great once it's done. Yeah, I'm sad, it's a lot more money, but it is what it is, you know, we can't just stop now, we already got the ball rolling, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
Press the wrong button, y'all, I'm sorry.
Oh, please vote them again. Thank you all very much, and at the next meeting, we'll bring the contract information, look at all the bids, and, you know, handle this money. Thank you all. All right, where are we? 4A.
Resolution 22-165, a recommendation to approve a special-use conditional-use permit as requested by Chad Darby to operate a machine shop, I-2 zoning classification at 1715 East St. Peter Street, contingent upon approval by the New Iberia City Council, all done in compliance with the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances, Appendix Z, Article 9. Use is allowable by special permit, Section 9.3, permits issued by the Planning and Zoning Commission for special-use conditional use.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed and a second, Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, is this near like the hospital area or that part of St. Pete or?
No.
What part of St. Pete is it? That's just the only question.
It's east, yeah. Jane, you want to?
It's around where the bowling alley is.
Yeah, all that area.
Yeah, not quite to the hospital.
And that's why I asked, that always looked like an industrial area to me.
It is.
It's all commercial there.
Yeah, it is. It's supposed to be industrial from the machine shops side.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a machine shop already in the, right next door.
I didn't know the addresses.
It used to be all kind of little places around there. I used to do business with them.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, any other discussion?
That was the only question I had, wanted to know where it was.
Okay. Anybody else?
In my district.
Yes, ma'am. Then, if there's no discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thanks for investing here.
Yep.
We need it. 5B.
Resolution 22 dash 166. A recommendation to approve moving a residential structure. Request currently found at 410 East Dale Street onto property owned by Melanie F. Abear at 338 DePierre Avenue, Zoned R1, single-family residential, all done in compliance with the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances, Appendix Z, Article 3. Schedule of District Regulations adopted, Section 3.3, R1, Residential District 3.301, Allowed Uses.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Dustin Swir, and a second, Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
I mean, I'm reading it, but they're moving a house?
Yes, sir, they're moving a house.
Okay.
From Dale to DePierre.
Which doesn't happen often. There's a lot of requirements to do that, and a lot of work to do that.
I suspect since they're going over the bridge.
Yeah, it's not an easy thing. And, you know, between our zoning and then just the logistics of doing it, and it doesn't always work out because you got to take them apart and put them back together. And it, sometimes the costs just are prohibitive. Any comments, questions? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. All right, item 6A.
Resolution 22 dash 167. Declaring the buildings and our structures located at 318 Weath Street in District 5 shall be repaired to conform to the Building Code of the City of New Iberia and that the property owner be, the property owner return to the Board of Trustees for a revisit on September 20th, 2022, to give an update on the status of remediations to this property.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dee Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item?
So just to let everybody know what's going on is, um, we actually sent the notice for, um, for Ms. Alma to come to the wrong address. And so she wasn't notified. We voted to demolish her, um, her house. And then I found out later that she hadn't been notified. So we talked with her. Um, we decided we were going to set it for August, the revisit for August 2nd. But when I called her to tell her the date, she was like, you know, the person who's going to be working on the house had knee surgery, and I'm out of town with my son, he's graduating from, I think, Naval Academy or something, and asked, could it be the very next date? And so I'm just asking, can we, instead of revisit on August 2nd, we would revisit, uh, September 20th? That's all we're asking, is just to change the revisit date.
So, don't worry.
You have a?
Okay.
I'm finished, I was waiting.
Calling you, calling you. Um, so September 20th, so we look from now, that's what, two months? Okay, so they getting from two weeks, now they got two months. Um, this act, this, this, this property in particular threw me for a loop because I was under the impression that we, we did vote to demo.
But we, but we, we sent the notice to the wrong address, so she wasn't notified.
She was not, even though she was not notified.
She was not notified.
That's why we're doing the process again.
And, I mean, honestly, I did have questions for Jeff, and being that Jeff is not here, so that, you know, that's kind of kind of.
And Jeff is the one who recommended this course of action just to move the revisit date. He said it could happen.
So he, he requested September?
No, I asked for it, and he said that this would be a good way to do it.
Okay.
So I'm just, we're just giving, trying to be fair because we did send it to the wrong address.
Right.
And we're just trying to be fair to make sure that when she comes, that, you know, for the revisit on September 20th, if she has not made any changes to the house, I'm going to lead the charge to demolish it.
And I'm a motion, I'm a second motion.
And that's the same night that we are visiting all the other houses, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
So she's going to be put into the batch with the rest?
Yeah, whatever, whatever this council decides, I just want everybody to realize, because it's really our only course of action.
Right.
It's either do nothing and it just gets revisited sooner, or it has to end up, because of our public notices, because of our system, it has to end up back in the pack.
It will be, back in the pack on September 20th.
And whatever happens, you know, we don't predetermine that, we wait to see. If, if no work has been done, I'm pretty sure.
Then we're going to demolish.
It's going to be demolished. If, if work has happened, or, you know.
Significant amount of work.
Yeah, then we do what we always do.
That's right.
But I just was very concerned that we, if we do anything, we can't do anything that's other than put it in the pack with the rest because that's the way we did our public notices.
Right, that's correct.
And our system works. We, uh, we're on our third lawsuit. Uh, I am fully confident we will win the next one. Uh, we do our homework, we are, uh, sending out, if we, if we had a mistake in a notice, we did it again. Uh, our system's been proven in court, and, uh, you know, I'm sure that it'll have to be continued to be proven in court. And that's fine, you know? I will always stand by, we are representing, you know, we are for liberty, we are for freedom. We're representing everyone around that house who is affected. Those people, we, I had somebody call me today and said, man, I'm so glad that house is being torn down. Well, I had to tell him, well, not yet, you know? Uh, because it affects, uh, neighborhoods, it affects other people besides the property owner.
Right.
And we are all supposed to, in our own little microcosm, we all make decisions for the greater good. It might be for your district, and then we link them together, it becomes for the whole city. But it's, uh, you know, it's more than one person and, you know, it's more than one person's liberty to consider.
And I would say that if you, and the reason why I'm not as concerned about the neighbors because you drive that little area, we could probably tear down five houses in that area. It's not the only bad house in that area. So we just haven't gotten to the others.
I understand.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's fine. Yes, sir, I think you still had the floor.
Thank you, appreciate that. Uh, hey, those five houses you said, put them on the list.
Oh, yes.
I knew that was coming.
Yeah.
Make Jimmy's job harder.
Trust me, I put so many on the list, I just, I'm like, okay, I probably need to slow down and let some other people put some things on the list.
So how many times, so this is, in my opinion, I don't mean to be blunt, but I don't think anything can be done. I mean, we dealt with these, it's been over and over and over again, and.
But here's the thing.
How many times, so the question is, so how many times have they been notified before the demo? Before we sent out a notification for demo, of course, she came to public hearings, she came in.
She's been to every single meeting except for that one.
And now we get to the demo part.
Yeah, our process is a, is a long process. The good part about our process is it takes months, and it should take months. This is drastic action.
And I totally understand that.
So people know it's coming long before we make a decision to tear it down.
Oh, yeah, they know.
Uh, so it is a long process, if that's what you're asking. It's not, it doesn't happen overnight. It's not like you just won the lottery, we're tearing your house down, it doesn't work.
What I'm getting at is the owners knew.
Yeah, yeah.
Their day was coming.
But the owner didn't get notified on the day we made that decision. And so that's why, we're just trying to be fair. Because if it was, it was, if it was my house and I didn't get notified, I would want time.
I get it, I'm with, I agree with you, I do. I'm just saying, I just don't think it's going to get done.
And if it, if it doesn't, doesn't, I promise you, I will lead the charge on demolishing it.
I'll hold you to it.
You don't, you know, I'm asking for my word.
We got a, we got a.
We have first and second.
We got a reservation for a first and a second.
Exactly.
Yeah, all right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you all, anybody else?
My thing is, uh, just protecting the neighbors first.
Yeah.
And then giving the people who own the house proper, you know, process and not never making it personal, that way we always covered.
I agree. And as the person that gets named in the lawsuit every time and that they come and serve me, that's what I want.
I think a house got torn down last week, I got chewed, chewed out.
Yes, sir. I got sued. And, and Jimmy got it too, and now we got sued.
I thought it was just me, so.
No, no, it wasn't just you.
No, well, we.
And bear the brunt of some of that.
And me, we are, hey, I got served. We are all in the same boat together, so, you know? We hang together, or we hang separately.
So if we're doing the right thing for the right reason, I can take that. That's what we signed up for.
That's exactly right. Cool, anybody else? Then, uh, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
I wouldn't want to give you that, though.
All right. Kevin. Item, I'm sorry, 7A.
Kevin Zaring, to present monthly budget to actual reports for November 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022, and November 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2022.
Any heavy requests going forward, put me on the top of the list.
That's not going to happen.
Yeah, sure, that's not going to happen.
You're never on the top.
I saw how Aaron looked at it, huh?
That's not happening.
Start with April, Kevin, or May?
We're going to start with April. Um, do y'all have any questions? Or do y'all want me to go through it line by line?
Um, I don't think we have to go through it line by line, that's just my thought. I mean, I just, what do you guys think?
All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right, and then let's go to May, because May.
Whoa, 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 I have a question. I didn't want you to go line by line, but I have a question.
Question, uh, Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, you have a question?
Sorry, Kevin. Um, okay, so I was just looking at planning and zoning.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like we budgeted a certain amount, we spent all the money?
No, what is going on with planning and zoning since that is majority of it is the grants.
Okay.
And it doesn't happen equally throughout the year. And then some of it, you have to spend it in order to get it.
Okay.
So what I did is I took what was, um, outstanding and assumed we're not going to get it, and we are complete as of that date.
Okay, got it.
Jane spent all the money.
No, I didn't. I didn't spend all the money, and we haven't received all the money also.
Okay, that makes sense, okay. That was just my only question.
Anybody else? All right.
And you're going to say the same thing in May and the rest of the fiscal year.
Yeah. So, so we're on May now?
We're going to move to May.
Okay.
All right, moving to May.
Okay, so in May.
Yes, ma'am.
It looks like, um, I'm sorry, it's, um, I'm going to make sure I'm on the right line. I think it's finance and tax. It's at 63%, and we should be at 58? Do we know, and it was higher last time, do we know why we're trending higher?
For finance, tax? Well, if you also look, our expenses are also higher.
That's what I'm talking about, expenses, not revenue.
Okay, well, then what I'm saying is my revenue is also higher than where we should be. So when I'm looking at this, I look at it as if one's going up, is the other one also going up?
Right.
So they're both around the 63, 65, and actually my revenue is actually higher.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
And that is mainly due to us receiving, um, some of the taxes do not come in equally throughout the year.
Okay.
Kevin's buying too much office supplies.
No, I was just, just curious. Okay.
That's an inside joke, because he busts everybody on office supplies constantly. Sorry.
Okay. All right. That was it, I just, just curious.
Do you want to go through it, or do y'all have no questions, and we'll call it?
Well, I mean, all of our percentage, we're not, we're looking at it. And I don't want anybody to think we're not looking at it. All of our percentages are well in line, except for the two that you talked about.
Right.
No, no, I understand, I just didn't know if y'all want me to go through line by line, or you've done, and y'all have presented y'all questions, and then we can move on.
Yeah, no, I think, uh.
I'm good.
It's okay, I'm, I'm good with it. I mean, it's all good, it's all within the parameters, I think you're good.
I'm fine with that.
I'm good, if you want it the other way around, we can ask a bunch of questions and keep you here two hours.
Keep you here another hour.
I can make it hard if you want.
Yeah.
He's like, it's never this easy.
Put me early.
Sit down while you got a chance. All right, Councilman's remarks, I'm going to start on Dustin's side tonight.
Oh, thank you. Um, one thing, I want to welcome a new clerk.
Definitely.
And I also want to thank you for your service for over two years. Um, I wish you well in your next endeavor. So, other than that, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, also, I'd like to say, Aaron, we're really going to miss you. Uh, is this your last meeting with us?
It's my last meeting.
Oh, my goodness, I wish I had known that, I brought you a cake. But we, we are going to miss you. Um, I think Laney's going to be a great addition to the team, but we're definitely going to miss you. By the way, my daughter says, send me your email address, and she's going to give you access to her Google Drive.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Also, uh, I just want to remind everybody that we have a gun buyback on August 6th, uh, from 12 to 6:00 PM. Anybody who wants to give up a gun or knows where there's a gun that shouldn't be in someone's hands, uh, please have them come out to the gun buyback. It's all anonymous, all these guns will be destroyed by our, um, the police department. Um, we're not trying to, you know, use the gun to try and catch anybody with anything, we're just trying to get them off the streets because we're trying to reduce crime in our community. Uh, and then, uh, lastly, is that there's going to be some, um, school supply drives that's going on. I think, um, we'll have one on July 30th. I think there's one on July 30th and also one on August, two on August 6th. So parents, if you need school supplies for your kids, uh, please come out. Uh, I don't have the exact times, but they're on the website. So please come out and, um, pick up some school supplies for your children. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Ma'am.
I would like to tell everybody that I had, uh, the pleasure to serve on a, a panel for the National Convention on Tobacco Health. And it was on June 29th in New Orleans at the High Regency. Uh, the session's title was Louisiana Champions Leveling the Playing Field Through Smoke-Free Policies. Uh, I was one of the council members who served on the panel, and there was also a council member from Shreveport. And we both, of course, now smoke-free cities. Um, also on the panel, they had three healthcare people, uh, you know, career people, uh, one doctor and two nurses. So it was a, a variety of people that served on the panel, but it was all about the policies that we have been, that we put forth, especially us, since we're the new kids on the block. We're the newest group in, uh, the state of Louisiana to become smoke-free. So I highlighted all of that, and, you know, we got accolades and everything, and we talked about the experience, which it was good and all. And now we just have to bring Iberia Parish along with us and, uh, continue to work on them to do the same thing, because it's all about health. Um, also, just want to say that we don't have Neighborhood Watch this month, and we're not going to have it next month either, we're going to take a break. So enjoy your summer, and I'll see the Neighborhood Watch people in September.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Also, Ms. Erin, we will be highly missed.
Oh, thank you, Mr. B.
And, uh, we appreciate everything you've done, hope you enjoy your time in the classroom. I'm retiring, and you're going in.
That's it.
Mr. Mayor...
Yes, sir.
July 18th, BNS Railroad Safety Coordinator, Bill Schubert, sent a letter, finally, that the deal is, I wanna tell the public, we don't wanna close any crossings.
No, sir.
We do not wanna close any crossings, it's not us, we vote them down every time, but the state has to pay $200,000 each one of these crossings to put the arms and lights up, the state pays for that. So, they think they have too many, and they're trying to save the public money by closing some of these that they can go maybe next door, and whatever, so we have two more to go, so they can come put up the arms and lights at Iberia Weeks, Julia, French, Providence Streets, Providence is one they wanna close, too. So, I wanna tell the public heavily, it's not us, we want Caroline to stay open, send access to the nursing home, don't blame us, the state already came down and closed some, in Generec, they came down and closed some. But the deal is, I want the public to understand, they, they starting to move to close Caroline and Providence Street, they sent a letter to the fact, I hope, Mr. Mayor, we send back that we still don't wanna close any crossings.
Sure, I can copy them with the last letter we already said.
The whole council don't wanna close it, but if they, they have to close one, to come down and do what they have to do, let's get this other project going for the safety of Iberia Weeks, Julia, French, and Providence, remember, people, every crossing you see in this state, or any state, 200,000, if not more, at each location, it takes to put, now we're safe going to Generec, we have Evansland, Deer, Bank, and Corina, they did those, we have six or seven more, so, uh, I just want the public to understand, and I'll say it again, we do not wanna close any crossings, and I hope we send that to the fact, to Mr. Bill Schubert, real soon.
Yes, sir.
You come do what you have to do, if you wanna do it.
Not promised, all written.
So, that's just my point of view on this, I wanna keep it pushed forward, but, uh, we have to overcome this hurdle.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, Aaron, thank you for your service, uh, thank you for always having our back, uh, I hope, you know, you do well, I know you're gonna do well in your future endeavors, I also wanna welcome, uh, Ms. Curligan, uh, I can't pronounce your name, first name.
Laney Spiner.
Laney. Ms. Laney Curligan, looking forward to working with you. That being said, I really don't have much, uh, I've got some invitations for you guys that came from, uh, Mayor Jennifer Bedream from Beale Plant, uh, having some kind of reception for her, it's on the invitation, for the, one of the nights of the LMA convention, she's becoming, she's gonna be the president from, or chairwoman of LMA, so, uh, she sent some invitations and asked that I pass them, give them out to all my councilmates, or other than that, uh, Dee Dee covered, Councilwoman Reed covered all that we have going on in the community, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Brooke?
Aaron, thank you, it's been a quick year and a half, but you've been so helpful, any questions I had, you've answered, I appreciate it, um, good luck to you on your next adventure, and Laney, welcome, um, I saw there's a number on your resume, that's your direct contact?